Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting and San Bruno Redevelopment Agency Meeting of September 27, 2011. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for us, very nice. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chair Ruane.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Salazar.
Here.
Council Board Member O'Connell.
Here.
Council Board Member Medina.
Here.
Council Board Member Ibera.
Here.
I'd like to ask our city adjourned to lead us in pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number three, announcements. I do have one announcement, and that is that the town of Colma, their recent September 14, 2011 city council meeting adjourned for their meeting in memory of the September 9, 2010, San Bruno fire victim. So we'd like to thank them very much for that. Presentations. We do have a proclamation this evening declaring Saturday, October 1, as Arbor Day in San Bruno, and it is fairly short, so I will read it. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, reduce heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas this year's observance and celebration will feature tree planting at Buckeye Park. Now therefore, I, Jim Ruane, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, to hereby proclaim October 2, 2011, as Arbor Day in the City of San Bruno, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. Vice Mayor, would you present this to us, please? Thank you. Want to say a few words, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to invite everybody to Buckeye Park to help us with the tree planting. It will be from 10 till 1 on Saturday.
On October 2?
Yes. I'm sorry. Off by a week, but no, this Saturday, yes.
October 1.
Okay.
October 1.
What did it say that I read?
I'm sorry, we have an October 1 on the top and we have an October 2 on the bottom.
We're doing it both days?
It's on Saturday, October 1.
Depends on the first one, how successful it is.
It's on Saturday, October 1, from 10 until 1 at Buckeye Park.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Through the chair. Randy, do people need to bring anything, or just themselves to help plant, or?
If they supply the elbow grease, we will supply all the other materials, the shovels, the gloves. If people have their gloves or shovels and they want to bring that, that's perfectly fine, but we will be able to supply whatever is needed.
Okay, great.
How many trees?
I believe we're planting six trees out there this weekend.
Okay.
Review of the agenda. I would like to move item 11, which is report of commission for two committees, the annual report from the park and recreation commission, to right after public hearings, item number eight. Any other changes? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes of city council meeting of September 13, 2011. Any changes, errors, omissions? Seeing none, they will be approved as submitted. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. I would like to remove item A, accounts payable September 12, 1911. I believe that's the correct one. Is that Mr. Marty, is that the one you want removed? The reconciliation?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's item B.
Item B, I'm sorry. We'll move item B, and item C.
Mr. Mayor, the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Medina have indicated he'll be refusing themselves on this item since they own property in the redevelopment area, but in order to avoid the disruption of having them step down and step back up two seconds later, we'll just have the minutes reflect that they did not vote or participate in the item in any way when voting on the remainder of the consent calendar.
Okay, very good. Would you like to vote on item A and item C?
Sorry.
Are we removing item C?
Item B.
Just, okay.
But you don't vote on C.
But you can vote A.
It's reflected.
Okay. Do you want me to move to approve?
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Item B, reconciliation of general ledger to bank reports and the investment reports dated August 31, 2011. Our Treasurer, John Marty, would like to say a few words to us.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here to report a recent development in the Lehman Brothers bankruptcy case. Last Thursday, the 22nd, we received communication from Sandy Arnott, the county treasurer, as to a latest proposed settlement. We're seeing the beginnings of a framework for a final settlement. At this point, the ad hoc creditors group led by Goldman Sachs, of which we are a part, has arrived at a compromise value, a settlement number of 21.1 cents on the dollar or higher. As we move forward over the next two or three months, we'll see that formula finally arrive at. To provide some context to this, in today's trading, Lehman Brothers debt was trading at 24 cents on the dollar. If that level of support remains between now and settlement date, you could probably see our number that we arrive at higher, but we no lower than 21.1 cents on the dollar. To provide further context, the highest this debt has traded over the last three years is anywhere from 20, actually below 20 cents, to as high as 30 cents on the dollar. That's been the trading range over the last three years. So we can fully expect the final dollar number to be in that, in that range. Furthermore, we are just part of one settlement group. There are other creditors that have banded together that have put forth their own proposals. They are more or less, however, in line with what we have here. It's fully expected that they will sign what are called form, excuse me, they will be signing what's called a compromise plan that will be presented to the bankruptcy court sometime in the fourth quarter. It is fully expected that the bankruptcy court will approve this, and then sometime in the first quarter of 2012, we'll receive our payout. If it is at 21.1 cents on the dollar, we can expect a settlement for us of 316,000. If it's as high as 30 cents on the dollar, it'd be 450,000 dollars paid out to us. So again, realistically, we can expect that sometime in the first quarter of 2012.
Good. Any questions of the treasurer? Any action on item B?
Move to approve consent item B. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good news.
Item eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. Tonight, we're going to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance which conditionally terminates the Skycrest Development Agreement and adopt a resolution to signing the Affordable Housing Improvement Agreement from Skycrest Partners, LP to D.R. Horton Bay, Inc. Staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council. This is an area that the council knows well. The Skycrest Center stood on the corner of Glenview Drive and San Bruno Avenue since the 1950s. However, after years of decline several years ago, both the property owner of the entire complex, as well as the developer, Skycrest Partners, approached the city requesting to demolish a majority of the center, as well as build 24 homes on the southern end of the site and expand and remodel the Lunardi site. In 2005, 2006, the developer did, developer of the 24 homes did receive several entitlements. These included rezoning the site, so it could be a medium-density development, included a planned development permit, as well as a development agreement, an affordable housing agreement, and an improvement agreement. Since that time, 12 of these 24 homes have been developed. They all are occupied at this point. All of the public improvements associated with this development have been installed and were accepted by the city in 2008, and Lunardi's was successfully remodeled, facade improvement, as well as an expansion and back, adding about 50 percent on to their store. So tonight, it's basically a twofold request, and one important thing is that the developer chose not to proceed with the final phase of the development, the final 12 homes, because of the decline in the housing market that started to occur in 2007. Tonight, the developer's request is twofold. It's number one, for the city council to adopt an ordinance that conditionally terminates the development agreement, and I'll get more into the details of that, as well as the second request is to assign an affordable housing agreement, as well as the improvement agreement, to the new developer that's interested in the site, which is D.R. Horton Bay. What a development agreement is, a development agreement isn't involved in every single development. We had one for the crossing, we had one for this development. And what it does, it has specific things outside the development entitlements to that both the city must do and the developer must do. In this case, Skycrest Partners, the major things that they had to do, they had to provide $200,000 in landscape funding for the medians. That has been done, that money has been paid, and the medians have been installed. They also had to provide a loan to Lunardi's in the amount of $250,000. This loan was given to the city and then would be given to Lunardi's. That loan was given, however, Lunardi's was able to secure private financing, and they never did take us up on the offer for the loan, so that loan was given back to the developer earlier this year. There was also an affordable housing agreement for the developer, instead of providing housing onsite, affordable housing onsite, they were required to pay about $43,000 per unit. And for the first 12, for the first 12 homes, that amount has been paid. And of course, there, the one thing that still hasn't been, that hasn't been accomplished with the development agreement is the payment of all fees. These are always due at the time of building permit issuance. So in this case, there's, of course, the building permit fees, there's the affordable housing fees, and there's also the school fees that go directly to the school district. So in this case, what the developer is asking for is a conditional termination. And what this conditional termination would do is the development would go away, no longer be recorded against these parcels, once the developer pays all these fees. However, even when this development agreement goes away, there are parts of the development agreement that live on, and they're all noted in your, in your staff report, but I'll go through them quickly. There's first is that there's a remedies and breach section, there's cooperation in the event of a third-party challenge, and there's an indemnification and joint liability clause. I'll let Mark explain, the city attorney, explain those if you have any specific questions on those, but those are important aspects, and those will live on and protect, protect the city in the long run. Regarding the affordable housing agreement, as I stated, the developers already paid $43,000 per home, and they would be still required to pay 43, the new developer would be required to pay the same $43,000 per home, and the city takes in that amount before the building permit is issued. And same with the improvement agreement, although all the improvements have been made, all the sidewalks, all the drains, and everything has been installed and accepted by the city, but we were concerned about that, is if there was any damage to those sidewalks, any damage to the streets during the second phase of construction. We still wanted to have that improvement agreement, so the improvement agreement would live on until all those 12 homes are constructed and we could sign off that the sidewalks and streets are still in good condition. In terms of what the final result would be, this development would be the same development that was approved by the planning commission, that was approved by the city council. There would be no changes, our development entitles live on, all the conditions of approvals live on, so that would be untouched. In fact, I've talked to the developer who is here tonight and can speak to this further, but they also have a vested interest to make sure that this is the same high-quality developments, because they actually still own several of the homes in the initial phase that they're renting out. So they actually have something within the clause in the, in the sales that the same high-quality standards be met, that were met in the first phase. Anytime we assign an affordable housing agreement, or an improvement agreement, or any agreement that the city is in with the developer, to a new developer, we want to make sure that developer can meet all the requirements of those agreements. City staff has looked in over, looked over D.R. Horton. They're a nationally recognized, I think the number-one builder in the United States right now. They have three decades' worth of experience, so we're confident that they can meet the provisions within the agreement. And just in an overall note, and I noted this to the planning commission itself, it is good to see that even though some of these smaller developers still can't move forward with some of these developments, that these large developers are taking interest in San Bruno and think that this is a good place to do business. We have Lennar recently break ground on the Cedar Mills project, and now we have D.R. Horton interested in breaking ground in this project. And if all goes well, they would be interested in breaking ground next year. So I could take any questions at this time.
Any questions of Aaron at this time?
Through the chair.
I read.
Aaron, are they going to follow the same architectural style that the other homes have? Are they going to do something radically different, or how's it going to work?
It'll be the exact same, the same entitlements live on, so the same architectural review permit, the same facade, down to even the same material and landscaping plan will have to be followed.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good. Anything else? All right, this time, we'll open the public hearing. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. Would anyone like to talk to us regarding this item?
Sasan, my name is Bruce Russell. I'm the owner of Skycrest Partners, one of the owners. We were the original developer. We've been here quite a while. We started this project, I think, in about 2002. We have kind of mixed feelings. We would have liked to have finished it, but given the economic downturn in the real estate market, we're a relatively small developer, a small builder, and some of these larger builders like D.R. Horton and Lennar, they're much more capable at this point of going forward, when it would still take us another year or two to wait for the economy to recover. So they approached us, we've talked to them. We have, I think, complied with everything we've ever promised that we would do. We've done all the things Eric, Aaron has mentioned. And one of the things that's very important for us, not only because we still own four units, but because we take a lot of pride in the projects we work on, is that this project's finished exactly the way it was approved. And in addition to the city having all the conditions of approval still applying, we have insisted that D.R. Horton, if they purchase the property, record covenants against it that require the same exterior finishes, the same architecture, the same landscaping, basically all the same materials. They might change the interiors of the house, but they're not going to change the outside of the house, from our standpoint, and I hope the city views it the same way. It's very important that there be continuity in the development, be finished like it was Although we have mixed feelings, I think it's kind of a win-win for everybody. Obviously, San Bruno has a need for single-family housing. We're not in a position, given the economic situation, to probably build the next 12 houses for two, for a year or two more, and these folks are, and that way they can finish off the development and the project will be done. So unless you have any questions, I don't have anything else.
Any questions for Mr. Russell?
I don't have a question, if I could. I just wanted to say, yeah, it's mixed feelings, because you've, you're almost like one of the pioneers of San Bruno redevelopment. And to see that a portion of our redevelopment area was done by the book, I mean Lunardi's was improved, and, you know, we changed, we changed use of that site, and you came in, and things aren't easy in San Bruno, because we get hit with a recession right when, right when we're rolling. So thank you, and wish you well, and I know, you know, that project will, will be completed and the way you intended it, so.
Well, thank you. We'd like to, you know, someday come back and do something else in San Bruno. It's been a great city to work in. The staff's been phenomenal, all of you have been phenomenal. And it's been a tough economy, though, and so this is a way for us to move on and for that project to get finished.
Through the chair.
Recon.
On the same note, Mr. Russell, reading the staff report and listening, it seems what you intended, came in, you've taken care of, you've met your obligations, and we appreciate that. And my concern, which Aaron already alluded to, was just the quality, that the assurance that the second phase and the same type of quality that we had in the first phase continues on with the same footprint and facade, I think that's important, so we add to the integrity of what's already began, and we conclude on that same note. But also, I can understand your sentiment and your feelings, but thank you for making the obligations and commitments that you agreed to, to, to the city and to the residents so far. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. It's important to us, and I know it's important to the city.
Good. Anything else? Okay, this is the public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak to us regarding this item? Should know that if we close the public hearing, you'll be precluded from talking about this item again.
Move to close the public hearing? Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, action on behalf of council?
Good chair, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading. Second.
Motion second to waive the reading, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. Mayor, if I can introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Thank you very much, once again, Bruce, thank you.
You also have a resolution.
Oh, we have a resolution too, okay.
I'll, I'll introduce a resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Now we will move to item 11, which we're going to put in right after the public hearing, and that is to receive the annual report from the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Stephen Marshall, and I'm the current chairperson of the Park and Rec Commission. In the slide to your left, you'll see a photo of all the commissioners, many of whom are here, Tom Lara, Lucy Z. Matia, Dave Nigel, Greg Pierce, Mike Palmer, also here, and someone who we'd like to especially recognize is Lori Greenberg. She was the Commissioner Chair 2010, 2011. Not here, but we'd also like to recognize Sierra Bauer. She's, for the last three years, been serving as our youth commissioner. So one of last year's projects was to work with the Culture and Arts Commission to select a sculpture for placement in the city park near the rec center. We reviewed work from several artists, created a story pole display, and selected a piece onsite and made our joint recommendation to city council. We still need to work with the Culture and Arts Commission on the specific plaque design, and we look forward to unveiling the upcoming results. In the next slide, you'll see the commission also collaborated, collaborated with the senior advisory board in the past year to establish guidelines that would allow for renters of the senior center to be able to use the kitchen while still keeping the equipment in proper working order for the other senior programs. The policy adopted by the city council and now in place will generate new additional revenues for the city. This year's inspection of parks and recreation facilities focused on all features in and around the city park. This included a walking tour of the senior center, Beckner Shelter, Three Ball Diamonds, the picnic areas, swimming pool, rec center, tennis courts, and the concession stand. We found the facilities to be in good shape and specifically noted the improvements to the swimming pool, newly resurfaced tennis courts, and the excellent condition of all the fields. One city park improvement that the commission recommended to staff was to make safety improvements to the intersection in front of the rec center. During last year's paving project, the placards were removed and not put back into place. This has been corrected, but the commission is still very concerned about cars not being able to see small children stepping onto the street, heading for the park and playground, because cars are parkingly, frequently parked in the yellow zone. As you can see in this photograph, community service staff worked with a traffic engineer to develop a plan to switch the yellow and blue zones in front of the rec center, so there's less cars obstructing the view of pedestrians walking across the street. This work has been completed, and we thank staff for their efforts.
Sorry, I don't have the slide.
Oh, way to go.
You can just visualize.
Visualize.
City park.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's there, yeah.
Top one?
Top right.
Okay.
Or right.
I can only do so much. The other large facility project that the commission has worked on and will continue to monitor is the Lyons Field project. As the city council is aware, adding a synthetic grass-surface to Lyons Field will greatly allow for year-round use, increase our revenues, and decrease our maintenance costs. Our commission has conducted several meetings with field users and will continue to work on the fundraising for this project. In addition to reviewing parks and recreation facilities, our commission also regularly reviews local programs. There have been several improvements to our youth sports programs over the past year, including the city's operation of middle-school sports program and allowing practices for after-school elementary sports teams to be held on school campuses. These changes has, these changes have resulted in an increased number of participants in these programs and freed up gym, gym time at the city park. That has brought new revenues to, which also brought new revenues to through rentals to St. Roberts and Highlands Christian School. Sematyo High School, Union High School District's determination that Crestmore High property is surplus to the educational needs of the district threatens the community's long-term use of the school's fields. Many of our commissioners were present at the district's hearings, and Commissioner Pierce, Chair of our Athletic Field Committee, has met on several occasions with the superintendent to remind him of the importance of this asset to the San Bruno community. During our reviews of recreation finance and participation reports, we are pleased to see that staff has been able to continually increase both program participation and cost recovery. Over the past two years, recreation programs have grown in popularity, revenues are at all-time high, and expenses have dropped, and the division has used, the division has used over 375,000 less from the general fund. At this, as this table shows, the cost recovery rate has increased dramatically, and the recreation division is now over 70 percent self-sustaining. We had an opportunity to host the new city attorney, Mark Zaffarano, at one of our meetings this year, and received updated information on the Brown Act, public meeting laws, conflicts of interest, and the Public Records Act. We also developed a commission handbook that will give both new and continuing members of the commission information that includes commission bylaws, city parks ordinances, Brown Act information, tips for working with other commissioners, council members, staff and public, a commission calendar and, and general guidelines. We think this information would be of help to many other commissions and boards in the city, and would recommend that the city conduct a commissioners' training workshop. So for the upcoming year, the commission has identified five goals. First one is to assist where needed with the completion of the donor recognition sculpture, such as the selection of plaques, inspection of Catalpa Park, Herman Park, Lamita Park, Crestmore High School Fields, and Parkside Intermediate Schools, assist with the fundraising efforts to Lyons Field, and to help rebuild Burl and Glenview Park. That's only four goals.
The fifth one.
The fifth one.
Intersection, which has now been completed.
The fifth one was the intersection which we completed, as Randy said.
We heard, we heard.
So if we can be of any further assistance, please let us know, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just a comment, as I say to all the commissioners and boards and committees, you know, we couldn't do it without you. This is all volunteer stuff, and it sounds like you've been very, very, very busy this last year, and you have some busy stuff ahead of you, too. We look forward to working with you on the Lyons Field situation. That would be a great, a great, you know, plus for our city and the sports programs. It's just a matter of, like anything else nowadays, the funding, and I know you're working on some grants, and Randy's been working on that, too, so that's good. We're looking forward to the sculpture finally at the city park and all the other efforts that, that you've made, so, you know, congratulations. It's, it's good stuff, and this city has always been very tight, but this last year, with efforts of everybody, has really shown, you know, who we really are. So thank you very much, all of you.
Any other questions for Mr. Marshall? Comments?
Through the chair. Real quick, Chair Marshall, maybe we, the council could receive a copy of that handbook. There's that one section about interacting with council, I might learn something. So, but maybe we can each have a copy of that for our review.
I wrote that section.
Did you?
I'll be very interested to read that a couple times.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? All right, move right on to item number 10, which is conduct of business. Our first item is item A, receive a Crestmore-Glenview Fire Financial Update Report as of June 30, 2010, and adopt a resolution approving budget amendment for 2010-11 for the Emergency Disaster Fund. Here's the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. The report that I will be presenting tonight is twofold. It serves as both an informational presentation to provide an update of city expenses and reimbursements related to the Crestmore-Glenview Fire, as well as an action item with a proposed budget amendment requesting an increase in revenue and expenditure appropriations in the Emergency Disaster Fund. As you are all well aware, the September 9, 2010 gas line explosion in the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood required the city to make significant expenditures outside of the 2010-11 City Council adopted operating budget in order to ensure that those expenses were segregated from all other city expenses, an emergency disaster fund was created, and all the expenses were charged there. As of June 30, 2011, a total of $3,369,625 had been charged to this emergency disaster fund. And they, we have been submitting for reimbursement through the categories that I'm going to just briefly walk through right now. General administration, the departments included here are City Manager, City Attorney, Human Resources, and Finance, and the cost of $532,000 includes backfill staffing, additional staffing in the City Manager's office, and the Finance Department to assist with the additional workload that was created. There is also interim city attorney costs that were captured here during the vacancy in that position, and staffing at town hall meetings and other mailings related to those activities. The Police Department costs primarily consist of staff time for the Police Department to respond to the initial incident, as well as the weeks following the incident. Time that they spent up there is all captured in that category. Site security in the Glenview neighborhood, this is the contract agreement with a private security firm to provide security at the neighborhood and at the explosion site. Total expenses as of June 30 are $567,000. Similar to the Police Department, the Fire Department costs primarily consist of the Fire Department's response to the initial incident, and those are $73,988. Community Development Department, the costs captured there are contract planning and building services, those that assisted with the re-entry effort after the evacuation, as well as ongoing planning and building assistance to assist with the rebuilding process. The Community Services Department, many of the costs that were captured here include supplies and other items that were required to ensure 24-hour-a-day staffing at the EOC, the Incident Command Post, and the San Bruno Evacuation Center. Other costs that are included there are, there are dumpsters provided in the neighborhood in the weeks following the disaster and some tree removal services. The Public Services Department, this includes costs for all the divisions in Public Services, staff time, as well as contract emergency repair services to city infrastructure. Similarly, Cable Department, the $75,000 primarily consists of the contract to repair the damaged cable infrastructure in that neighborhood. The retaining wall repairs of $675,000 includes the construction contract to repair not only the retaining walls that were located on private property that were damaged, but also a city-owned retaining wall. So, that contract, the total cost there, including engineering services, was $675,000. The Crestmore Canyon Slope stabilization was also a contract awarded last fall to stabilize the burned section of the Crestmore Canyon slope. NTSB/CPUC proceedings, cost captured here includes the travel to the various NTSB and CPUC events, as well as professional services to help prepare staff for those hearings and also represent the city at the various hearings. And finally, the Glenview Counseling Assistance Program, the costs here are reimbursements that were made directly to residents and employees through the Glenview Counseling Assistance Program to help them deal with the symptoms of the post-traumatic stress brought on by the incident. So, those are the primary costs that are captured in the $3.3 million that I alluded to earlier. What's not included in those $3.3 million are costs that are deemed ineligible, and primarily those are regular staff time hours, so exempt city staff time. The only costs that are typically reimbursed in this disaster recovery process are part-time and overtime, any extraordinary unbudgeted costs. The costs for regular staff time are typically not deemed eligible for reimbursement and are not included in those numbers. Another item that is not captured in those numbers are the costs incurred by the mutual aid agencies that responded to the fire. The city coordinated directly with CALIMA and PG&E to ensure that those mutual aid agencies were reimbursed directly. As of June 30, the cost for the mutual aid agencies was just under $3.2 million. The fire portion is the $676,000 that you see, and the law enforcement and other agencies, primarily San Mateo County and so forth, accounts for the other $2.5 million. On the reimbursement side, total reimbursement received by the city as of June 30, 2011 is $2,741,503. The reimbursements have been received through one of two processes. The first is a disaster recovery process that was established between the City, the California Emergency Management Agency, and PG&E, and that process mimicked what would have been a typical state reimbursement process had the state been reimbursing rather than PG&E. And so, CALIMA did a review of all the costs that were submitted and to verify their eligibility for reimbursement. Total received through that process is $1.1 million. The, that $1.1 million is broken down into different categories. $939,000 is for actual expenses that were reimbursed. In addition, the city received reimbursement for the use of city equipment to respond to the disaster, so fire engines, police vehicles, factors, so on. The city receives an hourly rate that's established by FEMA as reimbursement for those, for the use of that equipment. So, that is $97,000 of that reimbursement. And then, finally, an administrative overhead. As I mentioned earlier, the regular staff time is not eligible for reimbursement, but instead, the process allows for a 10% overhead charge to account for some of that time that it takes to put together, submittal, and so forth. So, that's $103,000 to date, or as of June 30, I should say. And the second vehicle for reimbursement is the trust fund that was established between the City and PG&E. As of June 30, $1.6 million had been reimbursed from the trust fund, and $1.4 million of that was for actual expenses, and the $154,000 are for the waived planning and building permit fees. So, what remains, the unreimbursed expenses as of June 30 was $984,000. We have submitted an additional $488,000 through the CALIMA process, and that has not been received yet. We expect to receive that probably sometime in the next month. Another $273,000 of costs are potentially covered by the city's liability insurance, so that is currently being reviewed by, between the city and the insurer. And finally, $222,000 of costs that just have not been submitted that we are planning and working on and submitting in the next month. So, that concludes the financial update portion of the presentation, and again, the proposed budget amendment that you're being asked to consider tonight for the Emergency Disaster Fund increases the revenue appropriations by $2,336,160, and increases the expenditure appropriations in that fund by $910,228. And that's in addition to a prior budget appropriation of $2.4 million that was done back in January. So, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kim?
Yes, Kim, thank you very much. On the lost revenue, I mean, you addressed the waived permit fees, but the property tax revenue lost at nine, under $10,000, it seems low. I mean, can you elaborate on that?
Well, the county has taken the role of calculating that loss as their, they have all that information, and so the amount calculated for the 2009-10 year, just under $10,000, is only for three quarters because the event happened in September, so it's for the final three quarters of the fiscal year. The amount in the 2010-11 fiscal year is about $19,000, so it is slightly higher.
And that's for all properties or just all damaged properties?
That is for all properties that were affected in some way by the disaster.
Okay. It still seems low.
I would guess the county's looking at the appraisal on those properties, which were probably owned for quite a while up there.
Correct. And that was part of, and actually, that is a good point because that was one of the observations that was made during that discussion, was that, you know, many of those homes had been owned for so many years and are at a very low assessed value. Because of the ownership, that the impact maybe wasn't as much as it might initially have been thought.
Right.
So, rebuild, revotation will kick that up, hopefully.
Any questions?
No, very thorough.
Okay. We're looking for a resolution to be adopted?
I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
And thank you to Finance. I know this has been a long, tiring process with lots of numbers that just don't seem to get, you know, it just doesn't seem to get any easier, so I know you're working very hard on it. Thank you very much. 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Foam Experts Roofing, Inc., the amount of $32,500, and approving a construction budget of $37,500 to replace the roof for pump station number six. Mr. Shannon?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. It's a pleasure for you tonight to discuss the first of two construction contracts related to pump station six. Pump station six is a neighborhood pump station located at the Corporation Yard. It's situated adjacent to well 17. Typically, water from well 17 is pumped up and into the pump station number six holding tanks, where then it's distributed into pressure zone one, which is the surrounding neighborhood of the pump station. Unfortunately, the roof, the houses, the pump station, is failed and has leaked quite a bit over the last couple of years, and is in dire need of replacement, as well the interior holding tanks, which there are two 50,000-gallon concrete holding tanks inside the pump station. The interior coating of those tanks is also showing signs of wear and age, and those need to be replaced as well. So, to both save time in terms of the amount of time that the well would be down, we want to coordinate these projects together, and so we came before Council just back in August requesting authorization to proceed with both the roof replacement and the tank recoating. And so, what I can do is I can start with the roof portion, and then I can pause there and take questions there, or I can motor right on through to the tank recoating as well, so.
Just do the first item, the roof.
So, the roof, so the, as I mentioned before, the roof has been failed in a couple places and needs to be replaced. Not only is it subject to leak, but it's also subject to long periods of standing pools of water several days after the rain has left. And so, when staff had originally conceived the project, we would think that, one, there might be some damage that needs to be repaired to the roof itself, as well as to create some pitch where we could make sure that we could eliminate those standing pools of water. As we put the specifications together and we did a closer inspection of the underlying wood of the roof, that was actually in really, really good shape. So, there was actually not a real problem with the roof itself. It was the tar and gravel application above it, which was essentially leaking through. That allowed us to opt for a better construction alternative, which is spray polyurethane foam roofing, where what happens is you prep the existing tar and gravel roof, you sort of vacuum up all the loose gravel, prep the surface, and you lay down a layer of foam with a protective top coating, which would prevent, which you can, you know, apply the foam in such a way you can get the slope you need without having to reconstruct the roof to do some runoff. And we had expected that those would result in some lower bid prices. And so, when we put this project out to bid to a number of contractors, roofing contractors in Northern California, we were disappointed to get only the one bid back, but we were happy at the price, which is $32,500, which is quite a bit below what we originally thought we would have to pay for a new roof. The low bid was submitted by Foam Experts Roofing, who are well-known in California for spray foam applications. They've done work for a number of agencies in Northern and Central California, and we feel pretty confident going forward with them. And we expect that they're aware of our need to get this done quickly before the peak of the rainy season hits, and so we expect to begin construction very quickly and complete by the end of October. And so, we have a contract amount for $32,500 with a 15% contingency of $5,000 for a total construction budget of $37,500. And pause there and maybe take any questions.
Any questions regarding the roof?
Just to clarify, the contractor or the roofer stated that there is no modifications needed to the structure?
Right, yeah, the, we had two different contractors come and looked at the site, and they both thought it was very straightforward application, looked like everything was in really, really good shape.
Great. To the Chair, that was my question, but you've answered it and re-answered it. It's about a 10-year lifespan?
20-year.
20?
20-year, yes. So, it comes with a 20-year manufacturer's warranty.
Experience in applying tar and gravel does not?
Right, the tar and gravel is not.
Okay, so, sorry, it is 20. And you were saying that we're happy with this vendor, even though there was just the one? And it was based on some of your background information of what and where else this person has, this company has worked, so?
Right.
Could you give me a couple of that?
Yeah, so we, they have to fill out a pretty extensive pre-qualification questionnaire. They have to have a number of years of experience, so many square footage. The one I can think of, Chabot College across the bay, they recently completed work there. Another public agency in Visalia, which I can't recall at the moment. Primarily, there were two in Northern California, plus the Chabot College, called both, all three of those project owners. They were extremely happy with Foam Experts. They thought they were pros, they know what they're doing, and they get in and out of there quick.
Thank you.
Anything else? Michael?
The city manager partially answered my question via email earlier, but I was wondering if the substructure of the roof is going to remain intact, and you're just going to spray foam over it, if there's still a need to empty out the tanks and do the prep work that was going to be required when the entire roof was going to be restructured? And this has more to do with the second item, but maybe you can explain to me a little bit more about what's involved in prepping that roof for the foam?
Right, so there is, so I, you know, staff would like to take the pump station offline during the construction process, just as an added precaution. So, the tar and gravel roof does stay in place, but there's a sort of a lot of rough and tumble that's going to go on on top of the roof in terms of clearing the gravel, doing some other preparation of the roof surface that I'm not 100% sure on what the exact technical pieces are. But we do know is that the roof slats that are in good condition, you know, it's not a super-thick structure, and so you actually see the nail holes sort of poking through the underside, and so there is gaps there that could allow dust or some other debris to fall through into the holding tanks. And there's no, there's no cover over the holding tanks inside the building. It's just sort of the roof and then the holding tanks. And so, I think for those reasons, we just play it safe and take everything offline.
And just in terms of background, I've been in that building before, but it's been a while. Can you remind me what else is in that building? Is there, a portion of that building has offices in it?
Yeah, so about, I would say maybe about a third of that building is actually the tanks, and then the other two-thirds, there's the actual pumping equipment, there's a material storage area, there's the computer area where we host our SCADA equipment, and then there is another office area there as well.
Okay.
And so, yeah. Yeah.
And in terms of the uniqueness of that facility, we don't have holding tanks like that anywhere else in the city? Is that fairly unique?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Yeah, yeah, that's the only thing we have, within an active pump station. The rest are sort of the large Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the only clip we have, holds within an active pump station. The rest are sort of the, the larger million gallon holding tanks that we have around the city.
Okay. And again, my, my interest there is just that I just want to make sure that we're thoroughly analyzing the investment in aged infrastructure versus moving forward and getting away from things that, that are becoming fast, quickly obsolete. And I think you, you guys have done the analysis and really doing something different is really well beyond our budget at this point. So I, I just kind of wanted to, to stress that, I mean, we've, we've looked at, at options and keeping this one going is, at this point, the only viable option.
Correct. I mean, I think that point is well, well taken by staff. I mean, to, to evaluate those options that may not be immediately observable, but to take those into consideration. In this particular case, where well seventeen is situated, you know, it makes sense to keep the, the interior tanks where they are in pump station number six. But more importantly, the concrete itself is actually in really good shape. So it's the coating that's bad, but the underlying concrete is actually very good because the original application of the coating was good, which protected the underlying concrete. So once we remove the existing coating, you know, we should have a really good concrete surface that will last many, many more years.
And I assume the same is, is true for the pump itself and the viability of the, the aquifer that, that it's pumping from?
Now you're going.
In general, the statement was correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any else? Action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain.
Aye. And now to the pumps, the, the, the holding tanks. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Jeffco Painting and Coating, Inc. in the amount of ninety-one thousand six hundred dollars and approving a construction budget of one hundred and five thousand five hundred dollars to refurbish the holding tanks at pump station number six.
Right, so, oh, we talked about this a little bit, so I'll try to be brief here. The, we put together a plan and specifications packet to remove the existing interior coating of the, of the tanks, apply a new coating as well as repaint some of the handrails that exist above the well itself. We put that project out to bid and we received three bids back from qualified contractors. And they have to be specialized painting contractors, so not, not everybody can go in there and sandblast and, and apply the type of coating that we need for, for that tank. So for those that we got back, we got back three bids. The low bid was submitted by Jeffco Painting for ninety-one thousand six hundred dollars. It was a higher amount than what we had originally anticipated. However, the uniqueness of our site here, as we mentioned, this is the only site sort of in San Bruno that is, is like this. And there are a whole lot of other out there, very many similar sites to, to compare to. And so we have a fairly small site that requires a lot of prep work. Because the holding tanks are located in a building where other activity is going on, there's a lot of preparation work that will have to happen before we can start sandblasting and applying the, the coating material. So we do have a higher dollar amount at ninety-one thousand six hundred. However, Jeffco Painting, again, comes highly recommended as a, as a contractor who's done work in Bay Area agencies, on Bay Area bridges, also quite well knows their craft. So we have a contract amount of ninety-one thousand six hundred with a approximately fourteen thousand dollar contingency. And we expect no more than twelve thousand dollars for staff support and independent verification testing.
Good. Any questions on item C?
To the chair. When was the last time, if at all, that this type of work was done to the holding tanks? And if so, when?
We actually tried to find, we don't have records. It was a long time ago. We, we couldn't locate records the last time this holding tank was re, re-coated.
How old is the holding tanks?
This holding tank is, it's old. It's over thirty years old.
I'm sure it's young to some, more mature to others.
Perhaps, perhaps that's the way to put it. Yes. We're estimating.
Could you repeat that, Jim?
Yeah, so I, I didn't catch all that either, but, you know, the tanks are, are coated, you know, on six to ten-year basis? Is that what I heard? A two, a two to six-year basis. This, this tank is, well, the director and I think perhaps over fifty years old.
The tank itself, I would intend to try to find any document to establish exactly when the last coating to place wasn't, none of us was able to locate any data when the last coating was done.
Well.
I didn't get answered.
Sounds like we need to get it done.
Well, I'm just, to the chair. Okay, so in, in both projects, we have a, a, a project description with a fund total in a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I just took out my calculator and, and both projects are well over a hundred and sixty thousand together. So what does that mean?
If we have to exercise all of the construction contingency for both projects and we have to utilize all of the supplementary costs for inspection and staff support, then that would be a correct number. We don't expect to have to exercise all that extra contingent. We expect this to be right around a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're a little higher on the tanks, we're quite a bit lower on the roof. And I think with the contractors that we have, we, we expect, we expect to be on, on, on budget with this item.
So just educate me a little on this. If, if we do go over the hundred and forty thousand dollar budget, you'll have to come back and ask for the additional money or what?
It would be, I believe, for a budget amendment.
Yeah, okay.
Could you update the council through, okay with it, once it's done in the contingency? Doesn't have to be reported, it could just be something in here, we don't need an oral, but I'd like, I'd like to know.
Absolutely.
Good. Action to the council?
To the chair, Jim, if I could ask a question? For the, for the refurbishment of, of the tanks, how long is that expected to take?
The, we have a thirty working day contract. The actual work itself will be, will be done probably over a period of, of a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Right. But so there'll be, you know, some coordination with the roofing contractor and there'll be coordination of the inspection of the, there's inspection of the surface after the initial coating material has been removed. And there's a inspection after the first coat is applied and the second coat. And so, so according to those inspections, we'll, to take, we expect a couple of weeks. We'll have that nailed down more once we have the pre-construction meeting with the contractor.
And you, you said that, that those particular tanks, that, that pump services a specified area within the region, within that area where the, the pump is located?
It, it serves pressure zone one, which I, I believe is actually is a fairly large area of San Bruno, which is fed by a multiple water source.
Okay. So i- in terms of supplying that area, you would just be diverting water from, from other areas?
Our whole water system is if they're connected, and then they can feed each other.
Okay. So residents wouldn't expect any change in pressure or anything due to this?
Won't even notice it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
Questions are good.
Action.
Introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain.
Aye. Adam ten D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the maintenance contract with West Valley Construction to increase the contract amount by sixty thousand dollars for urgent repair of water and wastewater facilities.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, I have with me Robert Howard, who is the deputy for operation and maintenance to help me with any question that you might have. As a, as water provider on sewer collection agencies, the city must rapidly respond to any service disruption, including water breaks or sanitary overflows. The city also must quickly repair any known defect that could lead to a leak or a SSO. For a responsible management of the system, in all cases, the service manager has to balance between the ongoing need for proactive maintenance and urgent response need relying on a sustainable internal workforce. To be able to manage the peak demands with available resources, the department must rely on available external support. To assist in this, in this effort, in two thousand seven, the city entered in a one-year contract with West Valley Construction with the option to extend that contract four times, each time with one year, for a up to one hundred seventy-five thousand yearly contract limit. The most recent extension was issued in January of this year. This was the third extension to this contract. Our department started a process to develop a new request for proposal, knowing the increased need to proactively repair the problem areas and to respond to breaks and SSOs. Unfortunately, our effort was unsuccessful and no bid proposal was received by the city. In meantime, in meantime, working on this process and going out for a bid, managing the need for a more aggressive proactive approach to prevent the number of SSOs, performing numerous, numerous urgent repairs to sewer mains and laterals, the yearly limit has been reached. As the result of our aggressive approach to prevent SSO, our, the result of that effort is already seen, our number of SSO was, was much lower this year versus the same time period of last year. In order for us to be able to respond for the remaining time period of till the end of this year to urgent needs, as water breaks or imminent SSOs between now and the end of this year, is, our, our request is for you to approve to increase this yearly contract amount with sixty thousand dollars. This increased dollar amount will be funded through Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, which already was approved in our operational, operation budget for sewer and water. There will be thirty thousand for sewer and thirty thousand approved for, for water enterprise. It is our intent to come back later with a new contract proposal and to propose to award a new contract for your consideration later in this year or in the beginning of next year. I am standing for any question and Robert is here to help me.
I'm, I'm just curious, since, if you can just sort of elaborate on the accounting of all of these various projects? So we have a detailed expense or a detailed accounting of each, each occurrence that West Valley or the, the, the contract service goes out to for every project? Because, I mean, you explained that there are many small projects and then there are obviously larger projects too.
Yes, I have here the copy of today, our total expenses, contract expense for West Valley is one hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. The biggest dollar amount, and that's what really pushed our, our expense level much over last year budget, was the work done on Montgomery and Fleetwood. Those were imminent SSO concerns and the department had to act and to prevent the damage and the ongoing sewer overflow and to repair the main and also the laterals on Montgomery. The total dollar for the work on Montgomery is close to ninety thousand. Basically, only just that work effort alone is more than the sixty thousand, basically what I am asking you to approve for this, in addition for this year.
Now, and, and does each, does each occurrence bring a city staff person out, you know, as far as to, to manage the project or to oversee what's going on?
Absolutely. Like in this case, when this, some of these projects are starting as a small project, not knowing what the end result will be. In many instances, this is also a exploratory type of work that in the, in the beginning, the assumption was that is a smaller repair will be enough to address the problem on Montgomery. And basically, it's based on the field investigation, the problem wasn't solved and more investigation needed to take place. And based on the investigation, additional work effort needed to take place. And yes, during all this effort, our staff coordinated the work, basically supervised and oversees the work itself.
So basically, this is just a time and materials arrangement with, with West Valley? Because they can't obviously bid on anything. They can't say it's, you, we budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year and if we get under that, that's fine. But it's, we've seen that we don't.
This time, the existing contract with West Valley is, is time and material. That's how is the contract signed, the existing contract right now. I didn't mention that based on our three years, four years experience with this contractor, the department was very pleased with the timeliness, availability, the quality of the work done by this contractor. And in many instances, the department had the opportunity to compare their price and their cost with other proposals. And always, so far, without any exception, what I am aware of, their cost was lower than any other proposed estimate. Our new contract, which is, I was referring to before, is, will be structured, is intended to be structured differently, not on time and material, but to, to, basically to bid out certain work efforts. And they will make proposal based on that specifically described work, work effort. And the contract will be structured differently than how it is now.
Thank you.
To the chair? Couple of questions to help me better understand as well. You're saying West Valley assists in water breaks and SSOs, correct?
Or urgent repair, which would result on a SSO or a break, depending on the situation.
So they can do cleanouts and do they do some of that as well? And in addition to responding at, at weekends or odd hours?
In some instances, when, when our own employee are engaged in a certain type of work which they cannot discontinue and that something needs to be done on a urgent basis, then will be always the service manager call or decision how the work needed to be done at that time and the next day to have enough crew available to do whatever work needs to be done the next day, then he will make the decision accordingly.
So are they called out after hours or on the weekends to services community?
First, always, the first call out will be our own employee. And for some reason, they are already out on another job. Or they just went home from a job. And the service manager considers that in order for them to be able to come back the next day and to work the eight hour on a, on a important job, then maybe he will make the decision not to call back the crew, but to ask West Valley to do the job.
So I'm just wanting to clarify that you don't believe that we'd have our crew coming out that were on standby for call, call out? And then again, then we have West Valley that And then again, then we have West Valley that comes in right after them on the same particular situation? Or, or is that possible? That we could have both our, an employee as well as West Valley at the same situation?
In some situation, the answer is yes. Like was a big break on, at Crystal Spring, if I remember right, basically, our own crew needed some additional support, and basically, in some situation, depending on the size of the job itself, is, I, I think in certain situation, yes, that can happen.
You know, something major, but in something minor, that you, we get a call from a resident, they say sewers have flowed or something, not having staff, and then having West Valley all show up, or in that?
Always will be one by one decision on the service manager, and he will program and will call out our own crew, the standby crew which is in place, if that is possible and desirable.
Thank you. You were saying we are lower in the SSOs?
You are absolutely correct.
From last year at this point to this year at this point, and what is that number? Where are we lower by?
Based on my latest information, but then just before the meeting, last year, during the same time of period, the city had eighteen SSO, and right now, the number is twelve. But I started to question a little about them, if my information is correct. But I would guess that is thirty, it's very close, the number, even if it's, let's say, one or two difference. But last year was eighteen, the same time period, and this year, twelve. And as you know very well, in the last three years, each year, our number of SSO went down.
With the same amount, with the same, pretty much the same staff in the field, as far as our maintenance workers and others, we, we've been able to have decrease within the SSOs?
With a very concerned, very concentrated, focused, proactive management implementation. Were many changes already implemented, and training, reassignment of the existing crew, more proactive maintenance, and very strong focus on spot repair to prevent imminent SSOs, based on our inspection of the system.
You had said that there's a more aggressive approach, which obviously has utilized the monies in, for the contract, for both labor as well as material. So could you help clarify what is the more aggressive approach that has utilized the monies that were allocated under that contract, and now there is a need for more to continue that aggressive approach? And could you help me understand when you say, so what, what is more the aggressive approach that is, that is necessitating the additional sixty thousand dollars on this contract?
Based on our information from video inspection, then the city, the department is targeting those very critical problem area to fix the problem before that will cause SSO. One of the situation was on Trenton last year, this year is another situation on Fleetwood, Montgomery. With those intervention, the city was able to prevent number of SSOs, and also, the department already has a implemented process maintaining the laterals, and already implemented a ongoing preventive program in order for us to reduce the number of SSO. Is, the department, the department developed a SSO reduction plan, and that SSO reduction plan was implemented eighty percent, Robert? The SSO reduction plan was probably implemented eighty percent of the recommendation of the SSO reduction plan was implemented was today.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Michael.
So would it be fair to say that even, even though the number of SSOs is going down, the number of incidents that could have led to an SSO are not necessarily going down? And in fact, our, it's our ability to address situations that could potentially lead to SSOs that has improved, and that's why we have less reportable SSOs?
Certainly, even if it's sound, sounds strange, but you are absolutely right, that the number of, the number of SSOs are going down, but the number of identifying problem area are increasing based on the level of increased knowledge gained from our system. You approved, if, three years ago, a program to video inspect all of our sewer system. And based on the result of that video inspection, now is available to us the number, the locations and the problem area, and basically set a expectation also for us to program and to plan how to fix those problem area. And that's the reason why you were, you were gracious, very graciously, you approved an increase of the spot repair program in our operational, on, in our operational budget, actually increasing to four hundred twenty-five versus the prior, prior years, accepting that fact for that increased need level.
Okay. So, so given that we have an, an understanding now of, of a certain burn rate that we have on these contract hours to address the issues as they pop up, do we expect this same burn rate to continue over the next three to five years?
Yes, was our intent when the department went out with this new, newly structured contract, with a different way of approaching things. Our contract, proposed contract limit was four hundred fifty thousand for a year.
And at this point, do we, do we anticipate, at some point, will our proactive efforts to replace the infrastructure catch up to the point where we need to spend less on reactionary contracts to repair what's broken versus just investing proactively?
Absolutely. Probably will be a cross, crossing point between those two, and I really hope that during our discussion as part of the sewer master plan, you will have ample opportunity to really discuss this and to set policy priority as part of the sewer management plan.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Action to the council?
Introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Rueng.
Aye. We already had item number eleven, item twelve, comments from council members. Jim?
Through the chair, I just would like to encourage anyone to read the NTSB report. It is very compelling stuff. It's a lot of stuff, so don't, don't think you can do it in a couple of sittings, but it's, every, every page just comes up with a detail that just seems very surprising, and I, I just encourage people to know, if they, if they want to find out really truly what happened, and, and the facts and the scenarios, then read that report. It's part of our history now.
And, thank you. And on that note, it's on, available online?
I, yes, I was gonna ask that, yeah. It is public record, it is available on our site?
Yes, the entire report was posted to the NTSB website yesterday. We can provide a link to the report on the city's website to make it convenient for people to locate it. As we had discussed with the council previously, immediately following the August thirtieth board meeting, where the report was discussed, confirmed, and approved by the board in Washington, DC, it takes a few weeks before the report is actually released in written form, and that's what occurred yesterday.
Is it possible to have that printed up and available at the library?
Absolutely.
For people to check out?
Yeah, we will make sure that occurs as well, yes.
Then, then I only, I had one question for Erin. I haven't seen any construction at the old Treetop site, the Pacific, I forget what it's called now, Pacific Rim, something, Pacific Rim View.
Bay Business.
Thank you, Bay Business.
So they're, they're still in the final stages of their, their HUD application? HUD has approved, has approved their loan, and they're in the final, I think, thirty-day escrow period. They said they intend to pull their building permits in October and start construction soon thereafter, so you should see construction beginning there soon, within the next couple months.
Great, okay, thank you.
Hallelujah.
Good. Any other comments? All right, item thirteen, we do have closed sessions. The first one is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, government code section five four nine five six point nine B, one case, and the city manager and human resources director request a closed session pursuant to California Government Code section five four nine five seven point six regarding labor negotiations with the San Bruno Professional Firefighters Association, Public Safety Mid-Management Bargaining Unit, Miscellaneous Bargaining Unit, Mid-Management Bargaining Unit, and San Bruno Police Bargaining Unit, and San Bruno Management Employees Association. And this meeting is adjourned until the next meeting here, October eleventh, at seven PM.